Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 City of Erie Planning Commission Meeting. A little roll call here. Mark Klecker, Chair, present. Rich?
Here.
Tony is not going to be here, I was told. Colin?
Here.
And Jason, I was told, was not going to be here. Everybody look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any problems? I didn't see any. Can I need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Blighted Property Designation.
Yeah.
I was talking, sorry.
That's okay.
Have the teacher throw the pencil out here or something.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. In front of you today is a resolution for the Planning Commission's designation of blight on the list of properties. The majority of them are residential properties. I was just confirming with Jake. 602 East Eighth Streets, it's a church on the corner of Eighth and Ash that potentially is owned as a commercial property. But other than that, for the most part, they're all residential properties that have been designated blighted by the Blighted Property View Committee at various times throughout the process. But, you know, the properties that the Redevelopment Authority at the current time is ready to take action on will, you know, with successful vote today, we would move these to the Redevelopment Authority meeting in May and then over to our Solicitor's Office immediately following that. So for condemnation action.
Sounds good.
All right.
Everybody look those over?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
You bet.
Wayne Health and Wealth Equity.
Let's give you a little intro on what you're going to be hearing about today from Hannah Moran, who's here from Build CDC, about the plan. Y'all have approved or recommended to City Council four other neighborhood plans for adoption by the city. That was East Bay Front, Academy Marvin Town, Buffalo Road, and then our West Bay Front. And the most similar plan to the ECAT plan that you'll hear about today is our West Bay Front Plan, which was done by, not by city staff, but by an outside organization alongside staff from the Planning Department to help guide that planning process. So you'll just, you'll be hearing a presentation today from Hannah. We won't be asking for a vote today, but we will be back in May to ask for that recommendation to council for full adoption of the plan. Yeah, yeah. So I'll give it over to Hannah, who has all of the details on the plan. I thought I had something else to say, which I do now. I'm going to sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you very much for having me here today. What you'll see in front of you is a presentation I put together to highlight why we started the development district, the work we've done so far, some of our planning, and then what we hope to accomplish in the future. I would like to show you the founding document on that first page there. So I know it's a little confusing to hear that I'm from Build CDC and this is an ECAT plan. So just to give a little bit of background, Daria Devlin, the first and former Executive Director of the Erie Center for Arts and Technology, is now the Director of Social Impact for the Hamlet Health Foundation, and I am the former Marketing and Special Projects Coordinator at ECAT, and I now am the Project Manager of Build. So the two of us have formed a subsidiary of Hamlet Health Foundation. It's a nonprofit community development corporation, and we will be doing a lot of the work in this neighborhood. So really, we're taking the work from ECAT with us to build, still working very closely in partnership with ECAT that has that trusted name recognition in the community. So it's a continuation of the team that we had to put this plan together. Another member of our team is Revell Showers. He works for him at our foundation and is currently at ECAT every day. He does a lot of our door-to-door outreach with the folks in the community and helps them very well. So after we decided that we needed to do a district plan, we formed a steering committee first and foremost with members of our neighborhood, so business owners, residents, and major community leaders. We did stakeholder interviews with folks across the city and the county to make sure that this is something that was needed for that neighborhood, and then we identified our boundaries, which you'll see there on that first page. They go from the Bay Front to Pennsylvania and then north to south from Sixth to 12th Street. We understand it's a very small quarter, but we want to be extremely intentional about making sure we could hit every single house, every single business in that space, and really leverage our initial investment in the ECAT Wayne Building that we renovated as ECAT and launch out from there. So on that second page, you'll see our methodology. We did a lot of community and public engagement. We talked to every person that we could who answered the door. We left flyers for them. We hosted four in-person community events during the planning stage of our neighborhood development plan. We shared information. We hosted events to really engage them and make sure that they were understanding our process.
Were they well attended?
They were well attended.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we had community dinners. We had a coffee and chat. We had a Halloween event with hundreds of members from our community and shared information about what we were hoping to accomplish. We also did a community survey that we went door-to-door with, and we got 40 responses from our neighbors from just that survey.
So not to put you on the spot, I'm curious, do you have any idea what percentage of your residents in this area you were able to engage with?
I mean, everyone was engaged with passively by the multitude of things we left on their doorstep. But we also talked to the Neighborhood Watch Group, which is about 30 to 40 members, multiple times about our plan. All the business owners are very well aware of our plan, and part of them are on the steering committee. So I don't have an exact percentage from you of the neighbors.
That's fine. I was more curious.
Yeah. And then we also hosted a months-long information session at Wayne Building, where we had information on the plan, and we had hundreds of people leave sticky notes and engage that way as well. So there are folks coming in and out of the ECAT building. Okay. And we also did a property condition survey. We worked with the city on this. We integrated previous data and we updated by going door-to-door in every household to do some parcel information. So we surveyed over 400 parcels. So we really wanted to benchmark where we're at now in the district, and then once we leveraged that investment that we had in the ECAT Wayne Building into home repair to see how far we've come. We also did a lot of data analysis collection with Alter. They were our consultants on this project, and they helped us put together the profile of the district that you have in front of you on Page Three. So you can see that the ECAT Wayne District is a little younger than the city of Erie, and we do a lot of youth programming at ECAT, and so we do see a lot of those youth. And there was a lot of narrative from our neighbors about engaging youth in the planning process, so potentially forming like a young residents of the community steering committee to get them involved in some of these projects moving forward. The median household income is also lower than the county average. We also see a higher number of folks living below the poverty line. And you can also see those neighborhood conditions for properties that we did survey. You can see that some of them are good to average. That still means they need repair, and they do need some additional work done. Oh, thank you for pulling up our neighborhood plan on there. And then you can also see the commercial, industrial, mixed-use properties. Many of them are in good condition, but there are quite a few, if you've driven on East Ave, you know that are vacant, abandoned, or could use some revitalization, someone in there doing something good for the neighborhood.
Other than ECAT, which obviously the facility is amazing, what is, what are some of the anchor institutions in that space?
Yeah, absolutely. So in the ECAT Wayne Building, we have the UPMC Jameson School of Nursing. They're one of our anchor tenants, one of the first folks to move into that space. The United Way of Erie County is in there as well. PHN Wayne Primary Care is in the building, and they were actually there when it was the Wayne School. They're a school-based health system that has been there for many years. But when we renovated the building, we rehabilitated a space for them. So they're much larger than they were. ECAT is there. Darius Black Wall Street, Birth Route, which is a dual of service for mothers in the neighborhood and beyond. The Blue Coats are in there as well. Shannon Pulliam with Shannon Pull Sports. Darling Pharmacy started with us, but they have since left. And we have a number of other institutions that come in and go and rent space. The Love Your Block has been in there a few times to use the space to talk to our neighbors and to do some surveying. And that's all the folks that are currently in the ECAT Wayne Building, but we are going to expand our campus. We were given the Wayne Baptist Church by the community leaders there, and so we'll be doing an expansion and bringing some more folks in based off of what the neighbors say that they would like to see in that space.
Awesome.
So you can see the findings and some of the action items that came from that neighborhood development plan based off all the surveying and the data collection that we did. We have three main focus areas. So creating pathways to whole homes. We saw that there was a great deal of need for home repair. A lot of our neighbors expressed that they would really like home repair. Love Your Block has been doing a lot of that work on porches and soups and with mailbox and numbers, but we'd like to be able to go into properties and do some of that work. That was what our neighbors had requested. The second focus area is supportive, inclusive, and creative entrepreneurship. So trying to bring some of the amazing ideas that we hear from our neighbors about wanting to start businesses into businesses on East Avenue and expand on some of the work we've already done with employability in the ECAT Wayne Building and with our own career development programs. And that final focus area is Imagine Our Way on East Ave. So really looking at East Ave holistically, what can we do to improve streetscaping? What can we do to revitalize that district and to bring more folks there, make it more walkable and more safe for our neighbors? So on that next page, we created the Neighborhood Development Plan. It is published. You've got a copy of that. That's set up on the screen there, about 45 pages long, but feel free to look through that. And then we did form our nonprofit, Build, which we're taking on a lot of this work. And Build itself has four key focus areas, and a lot of those focus areas will have initiatives and projects coming up or are in the process of being put together now that will support some of this work. So you can see the Build focus areas on the next page there. I want to just highlight some of these things and the projects that we have going on in the equity district neighborhood. So our first key focus area is Trusted Access to Healthcare. The UPMC Health Plan was putting it in a neighborhood center on East Ave, and that will allow us to use that space to have telehealth appointments and to push in programming around food security and healthy living styles. We also are bringing the RAM Clinic. This is an incredible organization at East Ave, Tennessee, that pushes into communities all over the country. It's almost a military-like operation. They bring in semi-trucks, and they bring in healthcare providers to offer free services in medical, dental, and vision to the neighborhood. So it's a weekend-long event. We heard from so many of our neighbors that needed glasses, and they didn't have access to vision care, especially not in East Ave in that neighborhood. So you can make glasses right on-site at this RAM Clinic. They do it in a truck. It takes two hours, and then they're ready to go. So this was something we thought would be an amazing resource for that neighborhood, particularly an ECAT as a building has the capacity to do it, and Build has the capacity and operational capacity to put that on. And then finally, we host the annual Wayne Community Health Fair. We do this in partnership with the city for the 814 concerts, and it's a great event where a lot of our neighbors come out and get access to resources they otherwise wouldn't have access to in that community. That second area is Safe and Affordable Housing. So Build is the backbone entity for Housing First Erie's Permit Supportive Housing Scattered Site Plan, and we will be looking to rehabilitate some apartments and homes in this district to be used for permanent supportive housing. So attacking that first focus area of whole homes. We do hope to do healthy home repairs with our construction trade students, as I mentioned. In that third area, Career and Workforce Development, we will be doing some on-the-job training programs with our construction trade students and utilizing some of those properties, and then continuing to support ECAT's other workforce training programs and UPMC Jameson's School of Nursing. In that final, Thriving Communities, we will be doing that Wayne Campus Expansion that I mentioned. Also, last year, in response to our neighbors' request for fresh and healthy food, we started a Pay What You Can Market and a Farmer Coalition of Pay What You Can Markets around the city to infuse that neighborhood with locally grown fresh produce. We have other food security projects in the works. We also will be hosting community events and continuing to act on our Neighborhood Development Plan. So that was a lot of information for you on what we're doing and what we hope to achieve in that neighborhood, but we are well on our way, and we're very proud of our neighbors and their engagement and the work that, you know, ECAT and all of our other organizations continue to do.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions?
If you have any questions.
Yeah. Have y'all looked at the EPA's Community Change Grant? I think it's up to $20 million for projects that generally would align with what you're looking at. That may be something, if you haven't yet, might be worth looking at. This looks great.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that recommendation. Yeah, we hope that even the strength of having the plan adopted will help leverage some of those resources to this community.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're so welcome.
Jake, the zoning? Thank you.
So I provided a couple of handouts. There's a couple areas of the zoning ordinance that just kind of are in need of some minor updating to get in line with the current state standards. And I, this is specific to childcare. The other amendment is, well, I'm not really recommending any amendments right now, but these are a couple of functional areas. We've been talking about various updates to the zoning ordinance to get things kind of in line with current standards. And so the two areas that really kind of jump out at me from day-to-day practice are the childcare standards and the, and some of the group housing uses that we have, that we currently have listed. We had talked about this previously as far as group housing, possibly realigning some of these uses, maybe defining a couple uses that right now don't have definitions in the book. Wanted to get this on everybody's radar screen for now to start looking at. I'm not expecting any action today. None of these, haven't really refined any recommendations. But on the childcare, preliminarily, I guess my suggestion would be the state, a couple years ago, sort of set up three categories of childcare. One is a family, family childcare home, which is anywhere from four to six kids in the house, in a house, in a residence. We've always been in line with that. We've had a family daycare home listed in the zoning ordinance for years. The other daycare or childcare classification that we've always had in the ordinance is daycare centers, which lines up with what the state's definition is. However, a few years ago, the state created this group childcare home, which is six to 12 kids, and we've never had a classification that lines up with that. In fact, the home childcare classification that we've had in the zoning ordinance, the state doesn't even recognize less than four kids as a childcare operation. So we have a choice. We can leave that as-is, which, when you look at the permitted zoning districts at home childcare, it's listed in several districts. So the question would be there, do we even, should we even list it as a childcare operation? The state doesn't recognize it. You know, one recommendation would possibly be eliminate it from the zoning ordinance, this home childcare designation. However, I do think we need to treat this group childcare home, which is this six to 12 kids. It's currently a gap in our ordinance. We don't have it listed. We've been treating most of these in, well, pretty much all the in-home daycares that have been getting registered since we started a daycare licensing program a couple years ago as family in-home daycares. So if you were not operating an in-home daycare where the primary use of the property is a residence, if you were using, trying to use a commercial property, for instance, then it would be classified as a daycare center, and you would have to follow the appropriate zoning for daycare centers. And as you can see, the daycare centers are permitted now in all of the commercial districts, in the residential limited business district, and also as a special exception in R3, which special exception uses are, they basically go in front of the zoning hearing board for approval, but there's no, there's nothing special about them. As long as they meet the operational conditions in the zoning ordinance, the zoning hearing board's obligated to approve them. So one consideration might be for daycare centers, do we want to remove that special exception designation and perhaps allow that as a permitted use in R3? That's something to think about. I don't really, I don't have a strong feeling on that either way.
I think it probably goes more towards just our general overview, more shift towards that form-based and kind of avoiding the special exceptions where possible. I mean, if it's a rubber stamp effectively, it's just more paperwork we're creating, not necessarily improving or challenging anything.
Right. And that's, and that's when we start looking at the entire ordinance holistically. I think those are the things that are worth looking at, which is, there's a lot of, I think a lot of newer ordinances are moving away from special exceptions as a use category because of what you just said. It's essentially a lot of administrative action, and you make the applicant go through several steps to get approval, when in essence, as long as you put, as long as you have conditions, operational conditions in your ordinance, special exceptions really aren't terribly necessary unless you want, unless there's a use where you feel that it should be in more of a public forum, because a zoning hearing board hearing does provide a more public forum, so to speak. There's testimony provided, adjacent property owners are notified, that kind of thing. But it, but it probably should be reserved for special cases and not, you know, the city's ordinance does have a lot of special exception uses listed. And that's probably one of the areas, I think, functionally, we should look at when we're updating the entire ordinance. But that's, that's a thought for relating to daycare. So on the, on the group childcare home, that, you know, my recommendation is we add it to the zoning ordinance as a use and a definition to match the state. Then we kind of have to look at, okay, well, where do we want to permit that? Do we want to allow that in all the same districts that we allow the family home? It's just, it's a larger number of children, but essentially is the same setup. We might want to modify the definitions to indicate that if it is in-home, because the state's definition says it can be either in a residence or at another premises. Now, how we would look at that now is if it's not in a residence, we would consider it a daycare center.
We don't have any use.
It's a little, it's a little confusing how the state did this, this either/or for that category. But I guess the real limit at the state's standpoint is that you can't have more than 12 kids, you know, versus a daycare center, you might have, depending on the size of the daycare center, you know, dozens and dozens of kids. So that's the other consideration is, do we want to perhaps think about limiting that or allowing it in the same districts as family daycare home, but with that caveat that that would only apply for residential, you know, where the primary use of the property is a residence? So that, that's, I know that's not completely all written out, but that's why I wanted to have this conversation and, and get your thoughts, move them forward, you know, craft some final language. So that, that's where we're at with the, with the childcare. Again, I'm not asking for any action today, but I think as, you know, as you guys have a chance to digest this a little bit further, I welcome your comments and suggestions, you know, contact me by phone or email. And, you know, maybe by next month, then we'll, you know, we'll put some final recommendations together and, and group some of these together to get in front of council.
Again, not to put you on the spot, do we have any idea how many or if there are any facilities that would, that are currently, the way it's currently set up in our ordinance, that would kind of be out of bounds with the state's definition of it?
No, I think-
There's nothing being impacted. It's cleaning up language primarily?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I know we have, it seems to me from all the registrations that we've been doing since we started the daycare licensing program a couple years ago, most of the in-home daycares, a few of them, maybe a third of them are looking at the family level, and it's probably because they have a relatively small home. And that being said, that's going to be a limiting factor, because the state licenses these daycares. So we inspect them and the state inspects them, the properties. So I mean, if a property literally can't hold that many kids, they're not going to get approved for up to 12 kids. So, but what I've seen and heard is that, you know, most of the folks that have been registering over the last couple of years are, are interested in the group of having up to 12 kids, and they, you know, obviously have to pass all those inspections and get the license before they'd be allowed to do that. So most of the properties that I've seen, they're, they're able to support it. And daycare centers, like I said, we've been, we've been in line for many, many years. Shifting gears over into the group- Shifting gears over into the group housing, our, really the most relevant recommendation at this point is that we have group homes listed in the, in the ordinance, and in the residential districts, group homes are listed as special exceptions for R1, R1A, and R2. Now, that being said, the, according to the law, the Fair Housing Act, group homes are supposed to be treated like a single-family dwelling, so they should be allowed, should be permitted in every district that a single-family dwelling is permitted. So having it listed as a special exception is, is again, making people jump through hoops that they probably legally should not be required to jump through. So the easiest recommendation on this end is to move those group homes from special exception uses to permitted uses in all of the residential districts. So that's kind of a no-brainer. We definitely want to formalize that recommendation. On the other side, you know, you'll see that I listed quite a few different sort of group housing terms that we have in the ordinance, and some of them are similar. There's a couple that are very similar as far as the group residence facility and the group care facility. They're both more commercial in nature, but one is sort of kind of everybody. It's not age delineated, and then the other is age delineated for, for children and for elderly. I don't know whether that's necessary to make that distinguishment or not. I mean, I think that, again, going back to the holistic view, we want to simplify the ordinance, and I think we want to simplify, we may want to simplify some of these categories, but then again, we may want to, there may be a couple of things missing, because I know we had talked about maybe transitional housing, things like shelters.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
And that's not in here right now. So there's a couple of things in both senses, maybe simplify and consolidate in some respects, but then there might be a couple of uses that we want to add related to group housing. So I wanted to get kind of what's in the book now in front of you to, so we, you can start to get a feel for that, and that's an area, I certainly don't have a lot of expertise in, in the group housing arena, you know, both as far as assisted living and, and, and things of that nature. So I don't know what might make the most sense at this point, but it seems like an area where we could...